Good evening. It is June 23rd. This is the town board meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you all for coming. We have a few announcements and then time for public comment and some issues to be discussed. So, I think without further ado, we'll go into announcements. Jim, do you have any?
I do not, Sue.
Sue's, how about you?
No, not tonight, thank you.
All right.
No.
No.
Okay. Okay. I have several. The first of which is a resolution honoring another Red Hook Eagle Scout. His name is Christopher Rusillo and he has completed the requirement for having Eagle Scout Board of Review. So, here is the resolution. Resolution honoring Christopher Rusillo achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Christopher Rusillo has completed the requirement for and been examined by Eagle Scout Board of Review was found worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas the Eagle is the highest and most prestigious recognition in scouting. Whereas Christopher's Eagle Scout project was planting the children's garden at Red Hook Public Library. Whereas through his achievement, Christopher has shown leadership, devotion to duty, and is a true example of the best of our youth. And whereas Christopher's achievement as Eagle Scout will be acknowledged at the Eagle Scout Court of Honor on July 13th, 2014. Now therefore be it resolved that the Red Hook Town Board honors and commends Christopher Rusillo for his achievement in acquiring the rank of Eagle Scout and authorizes that this resolution be passed to commemorate his achievement. And that is today's date and we have all signed it. I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to Christopher and to his family. That's one of those things, it's a family achievement. Do you mind having Claire send that?
Sure.
It's all ready to go.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. The second item that is an announcement nature, actually there are two that have to do with grants. One is a letter of interest in supporting recommendation that the town of Red Hook serve as a pilot community under a program called Cornell University and New York State DEC Hudson River Estuary Program. And what we are doing is offering to be the model community that will demonstrate the place partnering with other agencies to do some research. And there's a lovely letter here that I'd like to read with help from Brenda and Michelle Gregg who composed it. Thank them very much for this. There are a number of communities that will be considered for this, but one will be chosen. So, we're hoping we're in. And it goes this. "It is my honor as town supervisor to support and wholeheartedly recommend this application for the town of Red Hook to serve as pilot community under this program. The town of Red Hook has a proven track record of commitment to land preservation and conservation, and as such, we are well-suited and eager to work with Cornell University and New York State DEC's Hudson River Estuary Program with whom we have successfully partnered in the past to prepare a plan that provides the necessary tools for our town to protect our important watershed habitats in the face of anticipated climate change and other environmental influences. The town of Red Hook has a long history of conservation. Recent highlights of our conservation efforts include the Red Hook Farmland Protection Program approved by voters in 2003, authorizing the expenditure of three and a half million to purchase development rights from important farmland in the town, and the establishment of a community preservation fund in 2007 to acquire conservation easements to protect farmland and open space. To date, these efforts have resulted in permanent protection of 5,000 acres of agricultural and open space lands in the town. To further our conservation efforts, in 2011, we amended our zoning and subdivision regulations to implement the Centers and Greenspace Plan. This award-winning plan and implementing regulations are designed to protect farmland by using incentive zoning to transfer building potential from ag lands to a compact, walkable neighborhood adjacent to the village of Red Hook. The Duchess County Department of Planning and Development has called Red Hook Centers and Greenspace Initiative the finest representation of Greenway principles for intermunicipal cooperation and smart growth land use decisions. The town has also participated in two significant biodiversity training and study programs in Red Hook. Participants included volunteers from the town's planning board, Conservation Advisory Council, and Agricultural and Open Space Committee, who took the expertise they gained back to their respective boards and committees. Town of Red Hook elected and appointed officials, volunteers, business owners, and residents have worked tirelessly to ensure that our conservation initiatives reflect the greatest possible level of participation. The breadth of collaboration and consultation with local residents and stakeholders reflects our commitment to make certain that the entire community has a voice in our future. As such, we know that we are the best choice to serve as your model community. Thank you for the opportunity to nominate the town of Red Hook for this exciting program. We look forward to hearing from you." And we have to say, in the center of that letter and much around it, has to do with the work that Bill O'Neill and Harry and Brenda have accomplished with the Centers and Greenspace's plan and the intermunicipal task force. And we thank you for that. New topic, but, and one that's, again, a very unusual thing, I think. And not many people know what's going on, so I thought I would take a minute to describe. Bard College has a summer program called Center for Civic Engagement in which they invite scholars from all over the world to come and study together at Bard College, to share their research, to share their visions, and thus living together, learn a lot from one another. And I thought I would just let you know, this is the second year, and the countries represented are quite amazing for our little tiny community. So, I thought I'd just read what they are. Colombia, Indonesia, Malawi, Cameroon, Lebanon, New Zealand, Lithuania, Burma, Cambodia, Brazil, Pakistan, Egypt, Bangladesh, Russia, India, Romania, Kyrgyz Republic, and Montenegro. And the research is such that I couldn't even begin to describe it. It is described in short form to us, but it's quite amazing. Reminds me of the statement that there is never so much intellect in one room at one time than when Jefferson dined alone. And Friday night, they're going to be having dinner together and we've been, I've been invited to attend again this year. And it is really quite an exciting group and they're lovely people. And you'll see probably evidence of them around town. They love Red Hook. They come and take souvenirs home, just as most visitors do. So, but they're very amazing people and the program is quite beyond what most small colleges undertake. And I saved the best to last. It's not often that as town supervisor and a town board, we get a chance to show appreciation for our armed forces in a very personal way. But we can do so tonight because one of our own has come home. And I have written a proclamation in honor of her. Her name is Army Specialist Lisa Wiley. She is the daughter of our town highway department superintendent and her husband. And she is quite an amazing young woman. So, I invited her to come tonight and she is not comfortable making public appearances yet, so she let her mother come in her stead. And thank you Theresa Burke for coming and sharing the information about Lisa's experience. So, I'll just read the resolution. Town of Red Hook proclamation in honor of Army Specialist Lisa Wiley. Whereas Red Hook resident Lisa Wiley did enlist in the United States Army Active Reserve in November 2011. Whereas Lisa Wiley, following graduation from Red Hook Central School and U.S. Army Basic and Career Training, did volunteer for active duty in the war in Afghanistan. And whereas Lisa Wiley during service in Afghanistan was exposed to risk in service during shelling on the Army base and while driving Army gunner trucks. And whereas Lisa Wiley, while serving for seven months and two tours of duty in Afghanistan, earned the promotion to Army Specialist. And whereas Lisa Wiley has returned to the town of Red Hook and will remain for six years on active reserve duty, training monthly and for two weeks every summer. Whereas Lisa Wiley, a member of our community and Town of Red Hook family, has earned the distinction of veteran of foreign wars. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town of Red Hook this day, Wednesday, June 25th, to honor and commend Lisa Wiley for commitment to service to our country, courage in the face of danger, and through her actions as Army Specialist, has engendered pride and gratitude from her family, friends, and our entire community. And to that, we say thank you. And that is what I have for announcements, I think. Is there any public comment? That's good. Tonight is a rough one. It's threatening all kinds of stuff out there and we want to move this meeting right along. So, we'll go into the agenda. And the first thing on the agenda is a discussion of the resolution approving the Town of Red Hook investment policy. And I just want to say that our business manager, Deborah Marks Kuhn, has done a lot of research in this regard, has talked with the Association of Towns, has talked with the state comptroller's office, has talked with the town attorney, has interviewed banks. And it stems from the reluctance of some banks or in fact, in fact, the inability of some banks, large banks, to be able to do business with municipalities without fairly high, we think, service fees. And so, we looked around to see if there were any banks that could handle our banking without such service fees. There appear to be two. And I would ask that we table this till the next meeting because I think we need more information from one of the banks. And if that's all right with everyone, could I make a motion to table till July 8th meeting? And we'll see if we can get more from that second bank. We tried to get three. We got two. And, but I think we, the one bank has a fair amount of information. The second has a letter responding, yes, they're interested, but the conditions are not there. So, unless I'm, unless I just don't have it, and that may be, I think Debbie gave me everything she had. So, we'll do it on July 8th.
Did you want to actually make a motion?
I did motion, yeah. I guess I motioned to table that discussion till, thank you.
Somebody want to second it? Thanks, Jim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sue. Okay. So, I did want to discuss briefly because, you know what? June is almost over and July has me beginning and Rose Rider and the business manager working and you very soon thereafter on the budget for 2015. And I just wanted to talk with the board briefly about some of the considerations that are of a nature that are capital improvements. One is insulation in this courtroom. We know we're losing a huge amount of heat in the winter because the insulation has dropped from the rafters and it needs to be repaired and reset. It was done in my office when we discovered that it was loose and hanging down and the difference in the amount of comfort level in that room was incredible. So, I asked Ted Cuzzi Purchasing to make some, to get some estimates about what it would take to insulate the courtroom and the adjacent court offices. And he heard from someone, I'm not sure who, that it would be about $6,000 in labor to do that, to do this entire section here. That's at prevailing wage and then one at non-pervailing wage. It would take, they felt two men, five days. The materials were 1,200, the labor was three times that. So, the overall was almost $6,000. Then there's the balance of the building, which is the town clerk's office. And we may not be able to do this all this year, but the town clerk's office, the hallways, and the water department office would be an additional 6,000. The heating situation is very irregular and erratic and it may be a function of the old heating system. We may be faced with looking at that after this is done. But we thought if we could get the insulation done and find out whether that contributes to a solution, we may be in good shape before investing in additional heat pumps or whatever else. So, we know that has to happen because we're losing, the men have been upstairs. John Gardner has been up in, you know, looking at things and it's, it's very bad insulation and we just can't lose that kind of heat.
That's a good investment.
It's a very good investment and it's long-term. It will be worth it. And I know from experiencing just the two offices in the middle of the section, the difference was incredible. So, that's one thing. Second is that we have received a letter, and I think you have it in your folder, from our health insurance agency, CDPHP. And it is sent as a notice of proposed premium rate change to the program that we have subscribed to. And they have lots of websites where we can go to find out why, but they are requesting a rate change of the government, I believe. And there's a 30-day comment period and the rate change just blows me away. It is 18.7% increase, which as all of you who've struggled with the 2% cap on expenses realize, this is one of our largest expenditures and it just is a budget breaker. So, I don't know if they will get approval from Albany. I think I understand this to say that it's state approval before they can charge that.
Now, this is for the plan this year that we just negotiated and started March 1st?
Yes, it is.
It says in the first paragraph, 2015.
Yes. It's for the 2015 budget. Right. Right. So, we have to think about it now.
But it won't be this year's budget?
Not 2014.
2014, okay.
But the 2015 budget is what we're planning on doing.
Our present plan, they're planning on increasing 18.75% next year.
After the 15th, after January, well, actually it'll take effect. I think the plan, the plan is negotiated from April 1 to April 1. So, we'll have to build in whatever increase occurs when the plan expires, which I think is April 1st.
February 28th.
Of 15.
February 28th.
Is it February 28th?
Yeah, starting March 1st.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, it's just a blow and I just wanted you and the public to be aware that these are the kinds of pressures that we're experiencing and so are local citizens.
So, we have to plan for this in a budget and then take a good look when we figure out what plan we'll have next year around budget time.
Right.
Sit down with a...
Right. And try to figure out how to balance those two things. It's very discouraging. So, that's all I have for budget for the moment, but there'll be plenty more coming. Wanted you to approve the plan that we did last year regarding employee hours for summer. You may remember that I reported to you that July and August are very, very quiet here in Town Hall on Fridays. So, we discussed with the employees how we could balance their workload to add an hour, half an hour in the morning and a half an hour in the afternoon, four days a week, so that they could get out at noon, thereby having the same number of hours that they had served. And they were all interested in doing that. I believe this year, they will all be interested and I would like board feedback on that. I'm very much in favor of it, I think.
It's noon on Friday, right?
Noon on Friday.
By Friday, one day a week.
Noon every Friday, one day a week. But they will Monday to Thursday work those additional four hours in either the beginning or the end, however they want to do it. So, is that something you're comfortable with again this year?
Yes. You mean you're talking about the Town Hall employees?
The Town Hall employees. Now, Theresa approached the highway department and they come in very early anyway, right?
Six o'clock.
Yeah. And they...
I'm falling asleep, don't know why.
They were not, they were not interested last year, but I mean, you can certainly ask them again this year.
No, they like the 6 to 2:30.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, I will just go ahead and post that and make that, Sue will do a public service announcement so that people understand that the doors will not be open after noon on Fridays, except by request, I suppose, if there's something that comes along that we have to open.
I'm sure, but it would accommodate.
We would accommodate.
It'd almost be nice then that they could be open an hour earlier or an hour later the other days then to...
That's what we're doing.
Well, we are doing.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Would be open both an hour earlier and later or just would be hit and miss or we have a policy, that's what I'm asking, I guess.
I think the way it worked out last year, Jim, is everyone came in an hour earlier and stayed an hour later. Some of them cut their lunch hours short. You know, what we have to defend this to any audit is each employee is going to get a schedule and they will commit to working these hours, you know, their full hourly work.
Yeah. My concern is, you know, cutting Friday afternoons out for the public because Friday afternoon is, sometimes that's when people try and do business.
Well, I can tell you that we looked at it last year.
But staying, say for instance, staying till an hour later or an hour earlier on other days for the public could make up for the loss on the Friday.
Well, that's the thought. That's the thought.
Right.
So, that's what we're asking them to do.
Each employee would work four hours less on Friday, but then there's four days...
That we're making the time up.
Yeah. But you wouldn't have everybody working the two hours extra each of the four days, one early and one late.
No. It's just, it's one hour extra a day.
One hour extra. They can either work an hour early in the morning, half an hour, or an hour later.
So, we'll work out a schedule so that we have the door open for an extra time.
Right. Did you have any blowback last year?
Nothing.
Yeah. I didn't think so. I think, I think people are, you know, I think they're very...
They're on vacation.
Right.
That's a common practice.
Right. So, that's what we'll do and we'll get that underway. And I think that's all I have for you in regard to day-to-day housekeeping business and we'll get right into department reports.
Sue, what are your hours from like nine to five regularly?
The regular hours are nine to four.
Nine to four, right.
Nine to four.
So, now they would be...
Right. So, they would be coming in 8:30 to 4:30 Monday. Most of them will do that. In the case of the building department, the building department starts at, earlier because often he's meeting with contractors. So, his day starts at eight on a regular basis and he works till three. I think that's correct. And he's found that to be a much better arrangement for those people who are contractors and want to get an early start. So, there's some flexibility there. But we found, we did this exact thing last summer and I didn't hear any complaints from the public. We just needed to let them know that this is what we're doing. Okay. So, board reports. Jim, are you going to report the zoning board of appeals?
Yes. I have, in fact, I've even got an updated, the secretary left for me here as of today. In fact, I'll read it, Sue, and discuss it both the regular meeting and the special meeting. The zoning board of appeals held its meeting on Wednesday, June 11th, 2014. The continuation of the public caring for Donald W. Trevelle application took place. Two neighbors attended public caring who were opposed to the Funchine Nursery School purchasing half-pint daycare located on 208 Rockefeller Lane. The first neighbor was concerned that with the variance requesting to increase the amount of enrolled children from 60 to 120 would cause too much traffic on Rockefeller Lane. The second neighbor is concerned about whether or not fencing and trees on the property now are actually on her property. Another issue for her is when snow plowing takes place that her property gets stuck up from the plow. But that's, you know, separate issue. Tim Ross made a motion to grant an area advance to allow an increase in the number of students present at one time from 60 to 80 children. The motion failed, three in favor, two against. It failed because you have to have a majority of the entire board and there were only five members. It was a lot of discussion. The chairman had thoughts that it might not have been fair to the person because there were a couple of board members missing. So, he checked with our legal department. They held a special meeting then on June 19th. And you can rehear it if the motion is not exactly the same legally. And so, on June 19th, there was a special meeting held for the purpose of voting on the motion for the Don Trevelle application for the area variance. Tim Ross moved to amend the previous motion on June 11th to the following. Grant an area variance to allow an increase in the number of regularly enrolled students from 60 to 93. 93 is what the, that daycare center is allowed to have by the state that licenses daycare centers. That's the number. So, that's why the motion was reworked that way. And this motion passed with a vote of four to two. And that's it. There was a lot of discussion on both sides and the motion was actually probably a two or three-page motion itself, but that's the synopsis of what took place at the zoning board meetings.
Is that number of children in that space a function of square footage? Do you know?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
The confusing issue was to everybody, well, the neighbors were a little concerned, but you know, the traffic issue that they felt, well, the majority of them, they totally get stuff because, you know, there's a soccer field there and a school there. So, there is bus traffic all the time because of the school. I think one of their concerns is there's more large truck traffic on that road right now than normal because of the Linden Avenue Bridge.
Yes.
And so, they've been, so for good reasons, they were concerned about the traffic. But anyway, you know, it was, the confusing issue was enrollees and attendees. Any daycare, the enrollees, you know, are... Any daycare, the enrollees, you know, our zoning state's enrollees, well, if they have a hundred, a hundred and twenty enrolled, usually they never have more than seventy, eighty probably maximum kids at their time, because, you know, some were enrolled three days a week, some two days a week, some five, so it's a variation. So they tried to clear it up, and they have the regular enrolled students to ninety-three, which will mean probably there'll be less there, but then that's the maximum that could be on the site allowed by the state, so therefore they, you know, that's the most they could ever have, and the state apparently inspects these, you know, they come unannounced and count heads, basically, is the way they do it for the daycares.
Is that a Health Department issue, or is there a special agency?
It's a, I'm not sure if it's State Education or Social Services, I'm not sure, but it's inspected by the state.
Well, that's good.
Well, then they have to have their water supply sampled by the Health Department and so on.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Yeah, I know that was, some of these meetings are not easy. Is there anyone reporting on Planning Board? I don't know, I think they've.
They didn't have a meeting.
They did not, yeah, they can't, I thought there was.
Yeah, the next one is July sixth.
Okay, okay, good.
It was a different meeting at the Town Hall, but their last meeting night was, somebody had a yeti meeting or something, and they embalmed snowman people. I said, I didn't know anything about it.
Sue can report on that, that was a one-time-only, I'm trusting.
Oh, that's definitely, yes, it's a one-time-only, it was a Hudson Valley research group, and just became a little bit more than just loaning out our room to them, so, it's a one-time-only.
So it was interesting.
Well, I didn't go.
Oh.
No, I did not attend.
They told me that they canceled the Planning Board meetings, I could have gone.
Well, they didn't cancel the Planning Board for this.
No. Every day, and here.
Yes.
Why have you not known, I could have come in by mistake.
Covered that one, that's right.
It seemed like, yeah, they were never going to come along.
Interesting.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So thankfully, we have no Ethics Board meetings called. So we're into department reports, and Animal Control Officer's report is here. Jim, you're going to report that?
Yeah, I've got a copy here. It's not that long, I'll read the entire report. First category is dogs at large, and we have a beagle that is currently still at Dr. McDonald's. There is a dog found on Route one ninety-nine by the old Sky Park, the owner reclaimed that. Two dogs in the village of Tivoli owner educated on the dog-at-large law. Two dogs on Tower Street, they were gone by the time our enforcement officer arrived. Memorial Drive owner educated about dog-at-large and licenses, unlicensed his dog. Yellow Lab Route one ninety-nine Cherry Street owner reclaimed prior to arrival. Columbia Street Tan Mail was adopted out, and dog taken to Dr. McDonald's reclaimed. One barking dog incident at one six Echo Valley Road. Two wildlife incidents. No improper shelter, one dog bite, requesting owner to be educated with dog-at-large law once again. There was an Assistant Police Agency, a resident at Tivoli still an open case, and two cats referred to the SPCA.
Good, it's actually had a busy month, must be spring.
Yes, I'm blessed.
Love is in the air. Okay, thank you, Jim. And I don't see any assessors report. So, moving on. We have the Building Department report, and it looks like you're it again, Jim. At least that's what I have on this, Jim is to report.
Okay, I have a copy, so I can do that.
I'm picking on you tonight, Jim.
Yeah, that's fine. Permit status, there's a total of twenty-eight permits out, you know, miscellaneous alterations, porches, driveways, and so on, renovations, and a couple pools and detached garages. The inspector report, that's thirty-four inspections. Certificate status, twenty-four certificates, that's fifteen CCs and nine COs. And there were permit type, there were total fees collected, and, you know, there were certain, and the total fees that were collected were three thousand twenty-two dollars for the, you know, between the, the different types of permits plus the search fees and so on. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Just to bring again to our discussion level, grant application, we had talked about the possibility of using the Town Hall need for ADA sidewalks and a redesign of our parking lot configuration as an AD, or as a CDBG application for two thousand and fifteen. I was at County Planning for another meeting and was able to speak with, Harry was with me, and we were able to speak with John Clark, who is Dutchess County Planning's, probably, they say, the best parking lot and street designer they have, and as you know, he did some work for us in mapping out potential landscape as we were working on centers and green spaces. So, we pinned him down, it had been indicated to me by the new commissioner that it might be fall that he could be available, and I asked John if there were any possibility of being able to meet with us before then, and he said he would be free after July fifteenth. So I have written him and asked him for some dates, dates that Theresa and I are available, and Harry, you'll probably want to be part of that. And I haven't looked at my email since I sent it, so I can't tell you what dates he has selected, or day he has selected, but I asked for a morning, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, and it'll be wonderful to get his input on something like this because he is so good, and it is a service from Dutchess County, and our taxes at work, so I'm really happy that he's free and willing to do it, so. More to come on Dutchess Community Development Block Grant. The grant application for the sidewalks from Town Hall South was submitted, it was submitted on time, it was submitted with letters of recommendation, and I thank Brenda and Paula and all of their team, Lori Houston, they worked tirelessly on that one, and we're very grateful to them. And now we wait and see whether we qualify, that's a transportation alternatives program grant, very, very competitive, so we'll see what happens. Highway, does our superintendent have any announcements, any reports?
Just that we're starting our roadside mowing, so you'll see Ken on the mower driving around town, does fifty-eight miles, and he usually goes around three times to keep back all the brush and weeds that encroach on the road. And we are doing paving in July, we're hoping the first, the seventh of July, that week, the seventh is a Monday, sometime that week, we will be paving the other half of Norton Road. We paved one half last year, and we've contracted it out to be paved the other half this year. So those are a couple of projects that we have going on. And we're doing catch basins and culvert pipes and improving drainage and things around town, so summer's busy.
I'm sure it is, I know mowing at our house seems to be endless. Thank you, Theresa. Okay. Police report, I have one from the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, and one from the Red Hook Police Department. In terms of the Sheriff's Department patrols, there were a total of sixty-three incidents in the month of May, and they amounted to everything from automobile accidents to assisting other agencies to criminal mischief, disabled vehicles, shots heard, police assistance, property check, request for investigation, larceny. So, they covered us with sixty-three incidents, and our own Red Hook Village Police Department had a number of tickets issued, sixty-one, total arrests, ten, and they appear to have been busy as well. These are medical emergencies, lockouts, mental health reports, school resource officers is part of this report, though they're under contract, I believe, with the school for that. Security checks and so forth. The N T traffic law, there were only, there were thirteen B N T issues, stopping probably for speeding, would be my guess. And that is the police report. Purchasing, Harry, do you have that?
Yeah, Ted's been rather active. There was a fair number of eighty-five purchases in this month. It seems to be the month to catch up on keeping supplies handy and the necessary quantities on hand to conduct business, but it came to a total of seventy-three thousand dollars. There was roughly a twelve thousand dollar purchase to keep the lawn mowed at the, to get the piece of equipment to keep the lawn mowed at the rec park. Two of those categories made the major portion of work for the month.
Thank you, Harry. And the Water Department, Jim?
Yeah, thanks for port here. The normal water pump is seventy-seven thousand gallons per day. In May, we averaged eighty-seven point seven, that's because that's the month they do the hydrant flushing. So it's, it's a significant amount of water, they use flusher hydrants.
Right.
The wells are good, there's turbidity is fine, the chlorine vigil is fine, they've been doing their normal routine testing. The tank control level issues have been resolved, they've got plenty of micron filters, both one and five in stock and on hand. They have plenty of chlorine on hand, they have planned for two thousand and fourteen that some stuff, some work at the pump house, they're probably going to wait to replace the portion of the pipe from the pump house out to the main until next year. They need, some valves are needed at the Vassar Connection and Manor Colonial, and then they have some clearing around the tower fence. Integral tree service is going to do some of the poison ivy remove around the fence, and then Adams Fencing will prepare it, they have to have some of the poison ivy removed first. And that's about it, updating their inventory, and, yes, and the hydrant flushing was done May thirteenth and fourteenth, so that is what resulted in increased water usage.
Yeah, talking about trees and growth, you'll notice on that report that they did clear trees, I think they contracted to have clear, trees cleared around that tower, and around the water tower, and around the cell tower. They just seem to grow no matter what we do.
Yeah, in fact, there was a voucher for that.
Yes, yes, I thought I would make sure that you understood that was authorized, that we've got to do it because we can't have those trees threatening those installations. Okay, so now we're, we're at committee reports. While we're on water, Harry, you were at the water meeting, we were invited by the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Executive Director to meet with members from the village, and herself, and members of the Health Department to discuss the water availability for the Kerchhoff proposed development on Rockabye Road. Can you, can you report on that just briefly?
Yeah, there's, kind of the bottom line is that we have more than enough substantial water resources in the, in the, between the town and the village. The need is to have the excess and the reserve capacity, and that's pretty close, we're pretty close to the wire with reserve capacity as it stands now. The village has a plan to put in an additional well, which will overcome that substantially, and we're going to, we have a connection between the town and the village water supply that has not been used, and we will test that and get it up to snuff, so it will be available to be used as necessary. And the Board of Health is very much concerned about both the supply, the amount of supply, and the amount of reserve, as well as the quality of the water. The quality of the water is quite good. So the bottom line is that we have a number of people working on it, the Board of Health is following things closely, and we will have a supply available for Rockabye. There's one other element I didn't mention is that, not for Rockabye, for Rockabye, but the Feller Newmark Development. The Rockabye Development has a county managed system that is adjacent to the new, the.
Kerchhoff.
The Kerchhoff project and Old Farm Road, and that will be included in this, in this whole design when, before it's finalized. So that's a work in progress, we are making progress, and we expect to have it up and running with a real target date and some real numbers within two or three months.
Good, thank you very much. I think when we left the meeting, what I thought I understood was Bridget was going to write up the considerations at the meeting, and the Board of Health was going to do their thing with looking at numbers and doing a little research, and so we're kind of on hold waiting to hear from those two agencies, but it was a very productive meeting, I agree with you. Thank you for that, Harry. Bill, disaster preparedness.
Who was that, Ag and Open Space?
I have Bill to report disaster preparedness committee, do you mind doing that for me?
Yeah, I got it. The disaster preparedness committee reports that Committee Chair Vin Caluccio has agreed to conduct an assessment of climate resiliency preparedness for the town and village of Red Hook. The assessment protocol is established by the State of New York under the Climate Smart Communities Program, and it entails a thorough review of our land use rules and regulations. The goal of this project is to identify opportunities for enhancing our ability to identify and mitigate future flood, storm, surge, and other climate hazards. So Vin will undertake this endeavor with the assistance of Steve Busso, who has extensive land use planning experience in our area, and Gulad Abdi, a foreign exchange student at Ford College.
Good, thank you. Bill, again, the working group?
Yeah, I can report on the Ag and Open Space.
Sure.
Committee and the Zoning Review Committee, they met jointly in early June and discussed together the language proposed by the Ag and Open Space Committee to amend our zoning law with respect to agricultural fencing in the town of Red Hook. And there was a lot of discussion so that the Z R C could understand from the Ag and Open Space people who were present exactly what they're looking for. There was quite a bit of discussion, the matter was adjourned for further review and research. Subsequently, last night, the Ag and Open Space Committee also met again, and there was further discussion on what language they wanted to use. And that, that meeting didn't really conclude anything, but it's been adjourned now to July tenth, is again another joint session with the Zoning Review Committee and the Ag and Open Space Committee, everybody's on board to be there that night to try to finalize the language. Everybody's on board to be there that night to try to finalize the language. And Steve Cole is the building inspector's own enforcement officer, is reviewing the language which has been kind of proposed by some of the Z R C people. And anyway, it's still a work in progress, but, uh, the next step is for everybody to meet on July tenth in the Zoning Review Committee and to continue the discussion.
So they're kind of close to being on the same page now?
I hope so.
They're keeping you busy.
But they are closer than they have been before, yes.
That's great. Sometimes that's what it takes is having to meet a number of times to sort things out. It's great that they're willing to do it. Thank you, Bill. That's good news. Sorry, I passed right over that one. I, I just went to what was in my folder and skipped right through the, the agenda here. Has anyone, um, Conservation Advisory Committee, uh, report? I don't see one. Okay. And I don't have one from the Economic Development Committee. Does anyone?
Well, I meant, they met this morning and I was present. They're working on, uh, on, on a, a townwide calendar of events that would be available to the, to the public far and, far and wide. So if you, if you Googled "what's happening in Red Hook", you would, you, um, be, have contacts to literally everything that's happening in Red Hook, um, in the, in the recent future. And, and that should be up and running with another, within another couple of months. They've been meeting with Dick Womack to, to get that done.
Thank you. I don't think we have anything on design review. I am May. Enter Municipal Task Force.
Yes, the task force had weekly meetings in May and June. Continued to review and discuss the historic preservation local law draft of March twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, especially focusing on lodging options in the various zoning districts within the town, as well as in the floating light industrial district. And after the June twentieth meeting, the task force took a field trip to view and study rural roads in the town of Mylan and Clinton, and we actually got out and measuring roads just to further appreciate highway specifications in rural towns surrounding the town of Red Hook and to prepare for amending the highway specifications for the town of Red Hook.
Okay. And, and that begs the question, do we have, do we know when those recommendations are coming to us regarding highway specs? Does anyone know?
Well, they're really, they're really, they're really basically, basically done, and it's up, it's up to Chris now to, to create a, the resolution.
So they've been completed by the planner and sent to the attorney?
Yeah, and there's been a little bit of back and forth. We discussed it again in, in, in the task force meeting about a week or so ago. And, uh, there was a couple of issues to be, to be kind of adjudicated between those, those two sources of information, and we resolved that. Am I characterizing that correctly?
Well, I think so. I think we have to, we still want to run it by the highways supervisor.
Yeah, but, but what we, but what we have and we're sticking with is what, what the supervisor had, um, had, had agreed with, with the task force. And, uh, the additional, uh, quite suggested changes, we have decided against. I think is the bottom word.
Additional changes have been decided against, okay. Okay. All right, so we should be hearing from someone soon on that, and it'll be an agenda item, right?
Yeah, it will.
It seems to me we've beaten this one around the clock. How, how, how many years have we talked about this, Jim? Before, I think everyone on this board but you and May. We will get it settled, Teresa.
She's been part of it.
Yes, and Chris has, um, sent me, uh, some suggestions for clarifying, uh, the new amendment to the highway specifications. And Rick and I have been talking about that. We just need to make the fine tuning of it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. The final report, I think. Uh, no, not the final report. The Shared Services Committee met a week ago at the Village of Tivoli, and we had a really great, lively discussion for a couple of hours in Village Hall. And, um, the three municipalities, Village of Tivoli, Village of Red Hook, and Town of Red Hook, participating and discussing, um, our shared services grant from the county, which is to look at the possibility of shared services between those three entities. And it will, we hope, end in a report that will give us direction in how to, uh, save money and provide better service, or at least as good service as we now have and yet save money. So the consultant is, is, um, is very sharp and very engaging, and we are going to, or we are invited to make the next public hearing, or not hearing, public information meeting on the twenty-fifth of June, which would be our, uh, sorry, July, twenty-fifth of July, which would be our ordinary meeting, this meeting in July. So I said, those of us who can do it, who are not on vacation, will be there at Village Hall in Red Hook at seven thirty.
That's the twenty-third of July?
That's the twenty-fifth. It's a Wednesday. It's
That's the twenty-third then.
Oh, my gosh. I'm looking at June and saying July. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. Yes. Twenty-third of July at seven thirty at the Village Hall in Red Hook. And I think he's planning to notice that too, but we may kind of touch bases with him and make sure that Tim has done that.
Okay.
Thank you.
This, this being in addition to our regular board meeting.
It, it will, we had agreed that we would not meet a town board meeting second.
Right.
The when, the second meeting in July and August would be canceled for lack of business. We tried to get everything in that first meeting, so we don't have to meet twice. Due to vacations, it's not a very good idea. But it is, it does happen to be on that night. So I'm asking you to come out again.
No, no, no.
But do we have an actual meeting that night?
I was just wanting to point out.
This will, this will be, this will be our get-together, and it will be at the Village Hall. And the subject will be shared services. I don't know how he's going to set that up. When we were here, we sat around one large table, and we were all, you know, equal partners. I don't know how he's gonna set it up, but
You know if he said seven or seven thirty?
I, I wrote seven thirty. I'm, we'll confirm that. I'm quite sure it's seven thirty. And that's the Shared Services Committee. And then, Harry, you went to the Duchess County Senior Picnic today at the Duchess County Fairgrounds. How many people came? I was unable to go. I apologize.
There was standing room, room only in the tent. And there were a lot of people standing around, and a number of people from Red Hook.
Good.
Uh, Red Hook there. And a, a good time was had by all, is, is, is the most I can say. I made the mistake of having, having a brunch at about eleven o'clock. So I didn't, I, I passed my, passed my, my ticket along to one underage, uh, participant there.
Someone who was all forty-nine, probably.
Yeah, you know who she is.
No, I don't.
No? Hey, you're good.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I guess I do. You said that before, didn't you? Yeah, that's always, that's always a great gathering and a lot of sharing going on. And I like the fact that they are including multiple towns in a larger venue because people get to see and talk to each other. I, when they had it in Mylan at Wilcox Park, I ran into people that my husband and I knew forty years ago, when Bill was in school in Pine Plains, you know? And Pine Plains was there, and some Mylan people were there, and it was great. It was, it was really a lot of fun and, and, um,
It was probably a little more than forty years ago, though, so.
Oh, no, no. We're not getting into that tonight.
That was a good shot.
He just, I open the door every time, and he walks through. But there is a Senior Services Committee report. The Red Hook Senior Services Committee and the Red Hook Seniors wish to thank the Red Hook community for their tremendous outpouring of support for the Give a Child a Summer Meal food drive, which took place on June seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. The amount of non-perishable food donations to the Community Action Agency for the benefit of Red Hook School District students was amazing. The food drive exemplified how the Red Hook community is a close-knit community who cares for the needs of its community members. And that was submitted by Andrew Kerr, who is the Senior Services Committee Chair. And good for them. They saw a need. They did something about it and worked at it, and, and we thank them for that. And that's, I think, what I have for you tonight. I have a letter from a Tivoli resident that I'm working on that talks about, uh, transportation for students who, um, stay after school late and don't have a ride home, and could the Bard Shuttle be used to get them from the Village of Red Hook to Tivoli or vice versa? And I've not been able to run that one to the ground. I, I have a call to Paul Finch to find out what conversations he's had with Bard College, if any. So it's a work in progress, and I, I can't answer the correspondence at this point. But, but, um, we'll keep working on it and see if we can figure out some answers. Is there anything else? Nothing? Is there any public comment? Yes. Would you mind using the microphone, please? And say your name and where you live?
My name is Debbie Gillan.
Thank you, Debbie.
One of the neighbors from the, uh, the Treble and, um, Half-Pine daycare. And for some reason, I came in tonight feeling there was something going on. Um, I never got notification of a special meeting, um, when we were at the last zoning board meeting. Um, at the end, number one, I'm deaf, so I read lips and I watch. Mister, I believe it's Mister Ross came in, and there was debating going back and forth. And I'm not sure everything because he was behind me. And I believe it's his brother that was, um, is Tim Ross. And they were going back and forth, and Mister Anis was going back and forth about it being unfair and about them trying to pull a special meeting, and they were trying to get in touch with other members. Um, they were not able to do it at that meeting. And, um, so I was told at that meeting, Linda Lovello and I were both told, everybody, that it was done. It was denied. It was, it was done. They would have to, um, I did overhear something from one of the other board members telling one of the other people independently that they would have to do something. But if there was a special meeting, I had already told Jackie from, the secretary from zoning, that any notifications of meetings I would like to know about because the last meeting was supposed to be at seven twenty, and they had changed it to seven oh five. So she said she'd be sending out a letter to, to me. And then I said, also, Linda Lovello, we've been going to these meetings. We are interested. We want to know if there's a change in the meeting or anything. We want to know about it. I looked at your website. There's no notice of a special meeting from the zoning board. There is, I believe, um, a notice about a special meeting. I believe it was with the town board. It was canceled, and this meeting was put in tonight or something. But I'm not sure, but I remember seeing a special meeting and then something canceled then another date. But on the zoning board, there was no notice, no notification about a special meeting at all.
I believe there was a notice, and I know it was on the calendar.
On the internet?
Mm-hmm.
Um, as of last night, it wasn't. You know? Um, without dis, without disrespect, um, there was none.
I'm pretty sure I put the calendar on, so I'll double-check it.
Okay. As for, um, I understand, Miss, um, I had spoke at the meeting and told, um, Mister Anis, you know, I wasn't sure how this at all worked. And in fact, um, I believe I had talked to you in the hallway one day and asked you a couple of questions, and you had told me to speak to each, each department independently, and I did. Um, am I allowed to find out since there was a special meeting? Um, and you have approved ninety-three kids, um, to be there at any one time? Or is that a total enrollment?
Well, first of all, let's be perfectly clear. We did not approve that. We have nothing to do with that. That's the zoning board of appeals. And the chairman, as you witnessed in the audience, as I witnessed, sitting in the back behind you, although he had voted against it, he was concerned with the vote that evening.
Almost definitely. I understand that.
Um, you, you know, obviously, a lot of bet went back and forth between the zoning board members at that meeting that I didn't even, not even hear because I was in the back behind you.
I too. Okay.
But to make a long story short, because the way he felt, the public hearing had already been closed. But he, he felt that the, um, the person before might not have been properly heard because of the number of members he had at that meeting. So he checked with our legal counsel.
The member before, the member before who?
Members present at the meeting. Because the number of members present. So he checked with our legal counsel, and they called a special meeting, notified us that they were going to have a special meeting. And they did it all according, you know, with the, with the guidance of our town attorney.
Were Mrs., Mister Treble and Mrs. and Cricket there, Pettitella?
No, I attended the meeting. Um, Don Treble was there. And then, and the secretary, our town attorney, and the other members of the zoning board.
Okay. So I gather Mister Treble, even though the meet, you're saying a public meeting was then closed. And when the public
No, it was an open public meeting. He, he wasn't, they did not reopen the public hearing, so he wasn't allowed to speak. He just sat there listening to what, whatever they went on, went on between the zoning board members, yes.
Was the, um, was setbacks and parking, um, discussed at that meeting? Do you know? At this special meeting?
They discussed the, the whole issue. They discussed the new motion. I don't specifically recall if they discussed setbacks and parking because that issue had already been addressed at their prior meetings.
And it had been ruled
Most of the discussion was sent, most of, the discussion was centered around, um, the new motion that was presented at that meeting.
Um, if I have a problem, um, without disrespect, um, I don't understand all as I had talked to you and, uh, Sucrean I had come to about the postings of the meetings.
Suma can, I can.
Yeah, right on, um, oh, Su, sorry.
That's okay.
Wrong one.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Happens all the time.
Move your name over.
We're kind of interchangeable.
I had come to you about the posting and the talking and whatnot and tried to get some answers. Um, without disrespect, and I want to be sure, they weren't, um, significant, um, they weren't, um, we also have, we're not only hearing, but we have speech. They weren't quite precise or so that I could understand them. Is there somebody that I can go to? Um, who can I go to if I have a problem with what was done, what was said, what was said to me? Um, is this an ethic board? Is this a town board that I, I bring up complaints? Where do I go if there's, there are definite, I have definite, you know, problems or questions?
I guess I would
Not complaints, but, but questions.
I guess, given what you started to say, which you thought something wrong was going on. That's, that's how you introduced the conversation tonight.
Okay.
Right? I'm no expert on this, but my
I didn't have time to think, so without disrespect.
Right, no.
I have a word retrieval problem, so whatever pops into my head, um, with, I can't think it out quite as quickly as normal people.
That's okay. Neither can I.
So I, I throw out what I think. It, it, it isn't right to me, okay? It isn't right to me. Let me reword that. It isn't right to me that I understand it, okay? Um, I'm not saying, you know, I'm not accusing anybody, but if I have questions and I would like answers so that I could learn. I mean, a lot of things happened, and I was told different things, and I didn't get the answers that I could understand if this problem or this situation, unique situation ever comes up again. situation, unique situation ever comes up again. Who can I go to to address? Everybody's telling me I need a lawyer.
Well, if I can, if I can say this, I, were I standing where you are, knowing what I know, I would go to the liaison of a committee if you feel that you're dissatisfied with what went on, and have a conversation to see if one-on-one, you can better understand from one person what took place. And that would be Mister Ross on the town board. He is the liaison to the ZBA, okay? My recommendation would be to find time to talk with him one-on-one, because he's been liaison to that committee for many years and understands the ZBA better than anyone on this board.
So that's the ZBA Board of Appeals, that's the ZBA Board, Mister Anis and everything. What about, we have the planning department?
And you could talk, and you could talk to Mister Anis as well. He is the chair, as you know, of that committee. If you get no satisfaction, it is a citizen's right to draft a complaint to the Red Hook Town Ethics Board and be heard.
And who's the, I'm sorry, I'll blow the word, but Les?
Liaison?
Thank you very much for zoning and building and planning.
Zoning and building and planning.
Who's the liaison?
There is a liaison to planning as well. It is, I think there are two. Bill, I think you're one, and Mister, Mister O'Neil is one, and Mister Ross is the other to planning. They both, they know the most about the planning function, and the information about that can be best discussed with one or the other of them. The planner could enlighten you at a planning board meeting if you were to attend a planning board meeting.
Who's the planner?
When I, her name is Michelle Gregg.
Okay, I know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I remember seeing you in the hall, and what I tried to explain to you is that the zoning board of appeals and the planning board are very, very discreet boards, separate and apart in their responsibility to the town from, from the town board. And we try never to interfere with the conduct of that business, because they are independent boards with a right to make the decisions they make on their own, without pressure from any one of us.
Okay.
Okay? And that's what I was trying to explain to you, that I, I try never to get in the middle of those issues.
It was, if you had, without disrespect, and once again, that was probably a day that I was not too thoroughly clear explaining, but if you had stayed that day, I said, well, where can I go to learn these things about open committee? I said that people can teach you or tell you the ropes, which way to go, or, well, if you got this, you go from A to B to B to C.
Sure.
And if you're not going to C, then you got to go to E.
Yeah, and you were asking me, I believe, about open meetings law?
I was asking you about variances and different things and finding out, and with the zoning and the planning, and who came first, you know? And you were like, well, you're better off, I don't have all the knowledge of each department, you're better off to go to each department and see, because I was trying to ask, well, I want to build, if I wanted to build a building, the first thing is I get a building permit, okay? Then what do I do? And you said you're better off going to each department. I'm like, okay.
We go to the building inspector, get a building permit. If you needed a variance, then the building inspector would give you advice and help you fill down the variance application. Even if it was something that required the planning board intervention, like a special permit or something like that, he would help you with that, then you'd go before the planning board.
Okay.
Before he could issue that.
Okay, so you have your word. I have Mister O'Neil, Mister Ross, that I go to and talk to, and otherwise, I can draft my own letter and send it to the ethics board. And that's, once again, town members, correct?
You could, they are.
Okay.
Independent?
No, not town board members.
They're not town board members.
Well, they're members of the town. I make a pardon. Members of the town.
A separate committee, independent from any influence by the town board, right?
You have to see how much thinking I have to do.
Well, we...
But there's a procedure also for the ethics letter.
Yeah.
A specific procedure.
You should talk with, with the town clerk about the procedure.
Oh, I know, I talked to Sue about everything. That's what I'm trying to say. Sue knows me, and I hope usually when I come in, I'm more efficient and that I can express my problems.
Right, I think we've all really tried to work with you and help you out as far as we could, yes.
And this is what I'm saying. This was thrown to me tonight, and I'm like, oh, God, and I already blessed myself if you didn't already see me. I'm like, please be here with my tongue, you know, to guide me on what I'm saying. But, you know, there are some concerns. I have a lot of concerns. I have a lot of questions, you know? And I would like to know, as you said, who I can go to and who I can get them addressed to. When would I be able to see the copy of the meeting, since I gather you're going to say this special meeting, even though it wasn't, if it wasn't posted, Sue says it is, I leave last night to the best of my ability that it was not on the website.
It was today. I read it this afternoon.
Yeah, it was. It was posted as soon as I was told.
Okay.
What, are you talking about the...
For the, for the most recent meeting.
You mean the minutes?
You're talking the minutes, right.
The minutes were on last day.
We're talking about the notice, which was on.
But the notice of the special meeting was not on.
The minutes were on today, and they explained much of what happened.
But that's the minutes from the eleventh?
It was from the, no, from the second meeting. Both meet, both meeting, the minutes of both meetings are online.
Yeah, and then the special meeting is the third meeting.
Well, that was, that's online too. The meeting that was, when was it, Jim, this week?
The special meeting was June nineteenth, so it was last Thursday.
Right, the last one was the eleventh.
That's Thursday. Those minutes are online.
They're online today?
They are online, yes. I read them today.
Okay, okay. And then if I have a problem, I come back to either Mister Ross or Mister O'Neil, and then they can help direct me there.
That would be a good start.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate you all working today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one thing? What was the problem between the first and the second meetings? Because I don't know if we, I know when we reported on the first one that it was denied, and so, but I haven't heard anything about the second year, but I don't cover it, so I'm just wondering, you said it was the amount of people, it wasn't a...
You know, I was in the audience as well, but the way I understood it, Bob, was that although the chairman had voted against the motion, he, he felt that the motion didn't get a fair shake, because of, probably because of him knowing how board members that were not present felt about the issue.
So no...
You know, to make a long story short, that pretty much defines it. So he checked through our legal counsel how legally he could possibly seek to remedy this situation.
Was it not the fact, too, that in order to pass something, you need a majority, and they did not have a majority vote either one way or the other?
Well, just like us, you have to have majority of the entire board.
Right, and they did not have a majority voting that night.
They had a quorum, but...
No, I'm, I'm talking about the vote.
Right, that's what I said. The vote was three to two. They would need four to two to pass the vote.
They need four, which drove the proposal to remate, which was legal, could be done in sixty days from the original meeting without having another public hearing. And so they did that to try to settle the issue.
That's actually explained on the minutes that were posted today.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to look at the minutes. That's interesting. Yeah, because I know we reported the first meeting in line, and the last paper that was denied. And I know it's been going on a long time, and it's kind of contentious, so I was actually surprised when it was denied, but...
Yes. Okay, any further comment? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.